Good evening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get back your gap.
If everyone would find a seat, we'll get our meeting started. It's nice to see so many of you here this evening. Welcome to USD 305 Board of Education Meeting on April 10th, 2018. Please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Madam President, there is an addendum on personnel that should be at your place, and then we will not need an executive session this evening for personnel.
Okay, thank you. Could I have an approval of the agenda with corrections?
Madam President, Emma Doherty, I make a motion to approval of the agenda with corrections.
Second?
Second.
And second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero.
Next on our agenda is recognitions and presentations, and first on our list is KASB Certificates of Completion. This is Jennifer Bradford Vermon.
Dr. Hardy and President Elbow will join me in the front, and tonight, we're going to be recognizing district leadership for completing Foundations of Boardmanship Training through Kansas Association of School Boards. The training supports board members' development of the knowledge and background to make the very important decisions they are asked to make. We are pleased to present these certificates of completion to our board members who recently participated in the KASB Foundations of Boardmanship Training. Both Nedra Elbow, Board President, and Dr. Hardy Superintendent accompanied the new board members to the training. Certificates were earned by Gary Denning.
Would like to join you?
Please. Jim Fletcher also earned a certificate. He is unable to be here this evening. We thank all of you for your dedication and commitment on behalf of the students and staff at USD 305.
Next on our agenda is Salina Education Foundation with the LIFT program and grant presentations with Pam McIntyre, Director.
This is always a really special evening for the trustees because we are able to recognize our new LIFT recipients. They receive $5,000 a year for every year that they remain in the teaching track in college, and then for every year that they teach in USD 305, we forgive $5,000. Our goal is for them to love 305 and never leave, and you know, that's obviously what we aspire to. A little background on the LIFT program. We have supported 33 students to date. We will give away $35,000 this year in support for teachers, future teachers, and since the beginning, and many of you probably remember Casey Crisman, Casey Rousen Crisman, yeah. She was our very first recipient, and since that time, we have awarded over $282,000. So, we welcome our LIFT recipients, and I want to introduce each of them individually. I'm going to do something that is specifically for the new LIFT recipients. I'm going to read a little bit about what one of your references said about you. You will not, you will not know this before this time.
Tabitha Dynas is a senior at Salina Central in track who will attend Wichita State University
in the fall and will major in elementary education. One of Tabitha's references said, "There was a mutual respect during our time together, and I can honestly say that I learned just as much from her as she did from me. Among her peers, she is popular without giving in to peer pressure, and she is successful without needing the spotlight. Her strong set of values is something that she measures herself by, not others. She is truly an outstanding individual." Please welcome Tabitha Dynas.
Thank you for the introduction. So, there really hasn't ever been a time where I haven't wanted to be a teacher. Growing up, obviously, I was like any other kid. I wanted to be an Olympian, president, astronaut, but you know, teacher was always up there with them. I'm being completely serious. In fourth grade, for example, my teacher was giving away all of her supplies at the end of the year because I think she was switching rooms. I brought home at least three boxes full of teaching supplies that day, and throughout the summer, I made my little brother be my student and complete the worksheets, who he did not like it as much as I did, but it was fun for me. So, last semester, I was in a first-grade classroom, and the teacher I was with was my first-grade teacher, Mrs. Owen, so that made it even better, and those kids probably gave me the best stories I have of my senior year. They are funny. And so, I mean, I really started pursuing the path of teaching in middle school where I completed job shadows through the gifted program, and I continued this in high school where I focused my classes, my volunteer work, and my job all around teaching. I work at the kids gym at the YMCA, so I spend a lot of time with kids there, and it's really cool to see how kids act when they're not in school because it gives me more experience in my mind and seeing how they are in different experiences. So, participating in these events and activities in the community has showed me how much I really do love Salina. Everyone kind of seems to be saying how they can't wait to get out of here. I can't wait to come back. This is where my family's at. This is where I've grown up. I love it here. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to return and fulfill my dream of teaching.
Good luck at the track meet. Thank you for coming. Cameron Monk is a 2017 graduate of South High and a freshman at Emporia State University, majoring in elementary education. Cameron's reference remarked, "Attitude is never a problem. She is always positive. She is always caring. She is always enthusiastic. She is one of the most compassionate individuals I have met. She has terrific insight into how others might be feeling, often taking them under her wing and guiding them. She shows empathy to others in a mature, helpful, heartwarming way. In other words, this gal is a natural-born teacher." Cameron Monk.
I have attended Salina Public Schools since kindergarten, and I have loved almost every year. I have great memories from each year, and I even switched elementary schools, and the first year at a new school was my favorite, like where I met my best friend, and I just have really fond memories of all the teachers I've had, and I'm in contact with them still. In like my fifth grade year, I had first, it was Mrs. Michael's first year as a fifth grade teacher, and my senior year, I actually went back and interned with her, but she was in a fourth-grade classroom, and that's when I learned I love fourth-grade classrooms. And then this year, I'm observing in a first-grade classroom, which is way different, but they are so cute. And then also, senior year, I interned in an eighth-grade middle-school classroom, which I did not know what to expect, but I absolutely loved it. So, I'm actually also getting an endorsement in English, and it was because of Salina's all the opportunities I was able to have in high school, like interning or intro to teaching and the education pathway that has made me realize that I want to be a teacher. I've known since the fifth grade that I wanted to be a teacher because I tutored a little kindergartner and absolutely loved it. It was so much fun seeing him learn and like just for it to click, so I'm excited to do that for the rest of my life. And I also got to see how my mom, who's a teacher in USD 305, how she's impacted all of her students and seeing how excited they are when they see her out in public and stuff. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come back to my hometown and give back where I've got so much from it. Thank you.
Lance Racine is a 2017 graduate of Salina South High and will be transferring to Kansas State University this fall, majoring in high school science. Lance's reference says, "I have known Lance to hold himself to high standards. He is honest, displays integrity, and is an encourager of others. He displays patience, and his personality is very friendly and outgoing. Lance is respectful of others and welcomes diversity. He is a good communicator and is always willing to lend a helping hand. He comes from a very large family, and younger children look to Lance as a role model." Lance?
Okay. I am, you know, Lance Racine, and I'm going into high school science. These two, oh, Tabitha and Cameron, going to elementary school, and I can't do little kids that well because they'll get in my head and frustrate me. So, I want to go with the high schooler where I can sit down with him and talk face-to-face with maturity. And I want to, my dad is a huge like role model to me as a teacher because I would go into his classroom a few times and like just listen and watch, and I'd really enjoy like, like just being there, how he teaches and everything, and I could see on the kids' faces that they're actually really interested in him. So, I kind of, I want to follow his footsteps and like be a better, I want to say better teacher than him because you know, there's always competition. So, I've always just wanted to be the better teacher, but then, my mom is a science teacher, and that kind of pursued me into science. Like, she'd kind of come home and talk about her science and stuff, and I had Mrs. Hammond in class where she's at, I don't know, there she is. And I really enjoyed chemistry, and I really enjoy it in college right now, so that's why I want to major in chemistry. And the biggest moment that I was like, I want to be a teacher, is when I was helping my buddy, his name is Jay Shepherd, he goes to McKerson College right now, and it was with chemistry, of course. And he didn't, it wasn't really clicking for him, but I kind of knew, and I was helping him out, and then when I saw that like spark in his eyes or like that like lightbulb moment, I was like, wow, that felt good. I want to do that to other people and other kids. So, that's when I was like, I heard about the LIFT program, so I decided to apply for it, and I'm very grateful that I've been awarded for it. So, in conclusion, I've been born and raised here in Salina, went to Salina South, and I'm going to K-State in the fall to study chemistry, secondary education, and I plan on coming back here to teach, hopefully at Salina South, but we'll see where that goes. Thank you.
Mackenzie Fabritches is a 2015 graduate of Spring Hill High School and is a current junior at Kansas Wesley and majoring in elementary education. Mackenzie's reference reports, "Mackenzie has excellent verbal communication skills, is extremely organized and reliable. She is flexible in any way that is beneficial to students. She has gone above and beyond classroom requirements and expectations. Mackenzie's most notable quality is her desire to learn. She creates strong connections between other courses and content. She accomplishes these tasks with great initiative and a very positive attitude." Mackenzie.
So, unlike the other three, I originally was not going to be an educator. I thought I was going to be an engineer. I really liked math. I was like, oh yeah, I'll go be an engineer and do good things with that. Well, I did a little bit of talking with some of my teachers, and the more I was getting into those classes, it was like, okay, this is cool. I got the right answer, but this isn't satisfying to me. And lo and behold, as I'm having all of this, you know, freshman year contemplation in my head, that I got a call from a guy from my church. He said, hey, come out to this camp, you should be a counselor. I was like, I don't know if you think that's, I don't know, maybe not. Well, I end up at camp, and within probably the first two weeks, I realized very quickly that working with kids was what I was being called to do. Did I admit that right away? No. I spent all summer denying everyone. They said, no, you need to change your major. No, you should be a teacher. Elementary education is calling your name. And I said, no, 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 I'm not very good at this. Well, start of sophomore year, I decided, you know what, I want to pursue this, and I instantly got put into an early field experience class and was in with some really cute kindergartners, and it was just eye-opening. And working with the kids, it just, it was satisfying to me. I can get the right answer to a problem. You can, you know, put the theorem in front of me and I can solve it, but that's not what makes me happy. And so, as I've been figuring this out, being part of Kansas Wesleyan and all of these opportunities, getting to know Salina's community, and just the more that I'm in here, I get really excited and I am beyond passionate about it. You can ask my family, boyfriend, anybody, I color-code everything. I've got binders for everything. I've spent multiple dollars at the library already on 25-cent books, so I've got tubs of those already. And so, I just, you know, I've denied it probably a good portion of my life. I've always enjoyed teaching others and helping others, and so, it's really exciting that I finally have found what is passionate to me, and I'm beyond thankful for the opportunity you guys have given me. So, thank you for everything.
USD 305 is in great shape and great hands with these young people. We're so proud of them. There are other LIFT recipients in our audience. Last year, I forgot to recognize them, and I'm not going to forget that this time. Where is everyone? Jessica Steele is here. Jessica, Jessica is the Horizon Award winner for the elementary. Yeah, so, first-year teacher, LIFT recipient, wins the elementary award. Congrats. Kelsey Plummer, I think, Kelsey and Jessica, you are side-by-side at Cottonwood, aren't you? Yeah. Kelsey Plummer. Lindsay Radial's here. Where's Lindsay? Hi, Lindsay.
I'm going to interrupt here just a moment. Could you people come forward? We're filming this, and it'd be nice if the people in the TV audience could see what you look like instead of just, come over here by Pam McIntyre and just stand there. That way, everybody will be able to see you later.
Did I miss anyone? Is anyone else here? Girl, you can help me. Thank you. Lindsay teaches elementary at Meadowlark Ridge. Kelsey and Jessica are at Cottonwood. So, really proud of them. I'm also really proud of the Board of Trustees that I work with. I guess you're going to have to come and stand by me so that you get on camera. Pam Evans, come on up. Byron, come on up. George Troutfetter, who is joining the Kansas Hall of Fame Teachers. Nedra and Gary, of course, are such important trustees to us. Who else? Who have I forgotten? Oh, Melinda, Melinda Idle. You know, a couple of years ago, we looked at our Board of Trustees and we said, we don't have a teacher on our board. And Melinda is our teacher representative, so important to the decisions that we make, absolutely critical. Did I get everyone? Oh, Kate Bycroft. She was, she was hiding, but there she is, yeah. All of these people make everything that we do possible, all of the grants, all of the LIFT recipients. It's because of the work of this Board of Trustees, so I appreciate each and every one of them. Since 1993, we've been awarding grants, classroom grants to teachers. Our focus has narrowed wherever possible to be project-based grants, and this year, we're awarding over $30,000 in classroom grants. Total since 1993 is over $700,000. So, not only are we identifying new teachers, when you all are new teachers, you will apply for grants. You know, think about what you need in your classrooms and ask for them. So, I want to introduce the 21st Century Advantage Grant Awards. Krista DeVoe and Katrina Parity. Central students will use an online program called Flipgrid to tell a story based on a video prompt from the teacher. Students post their stories and other students give positive feedback. Stories are also prompted by Story Cubes. They're called Rory Stories, which uses dice with pictures to prompt creative thought. Based upon a picture on the die, students will create open-ended stories that they post, prompting the viewer to finish the story using the image on the die. This activity encourages students to apply such conventions as plot and conflict to ideas that are not so predictable, very creative. We have a few teachers that are not able to come, but I think we have stand-ins for them. Anissa Bigler, Central High. Graduating seniors leave a legacy for incoming seniors by selecting books for pleasure reading. This is Nate. The books are kept in the classroom and have a sticker identifying them as a legacy gift from the previous senior class. Current students are encouraged to read the legacy books, and reluctant readers become interested in what previous classes have left behind for them. The first year, students read 486 books. Last year, they read 610. Wow. Thank you, Nate. I'm going to call all three of these teachers up at once. Brooke Jennings, April Mayorga, and Jennifer Boiles. Science students will have the opportunity to explore STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math concepts by collaborating to design, test, and create projects, both in a lab setting and in the classroom. Students can choose their own activities based upon their interests and will work with others who share the same interest. Students are required to complete all projects they start and give a short verbal report on what they found most interesting, most challenging, and any changes that they would make to the activity. Thank you, guys. Kylie Flaherty, I hope I'm saying that right. Flaherty. A Little Free Library, I love this one. A Little Free Library will be set up close to the entrance of Husner. Neighborhood children will be encouraged to take a book and give a book. The library will be especially important during the summer when the school's library is closed and students may not be able to go to Salina Public Library. The project will be monitored weekly with an eye towards stalking the library with high interest and appropriate reading materials. Thanks for the idea. Now, we're into Meadowlark Ridge people. Carrie Slothauer, School Counselor, Social Worker, and Paraprofessionals will teach additional social, emotional lessons to two large groups, K-12 and 3-5. The goal is to create a positive attitude about learning and failing. Teaching growth mindset tells students that everyone's brain grows at a different rate and speed. Teaching a student that they may not be able to do something yet is a powerful message that can change attitudes about learning. Lisa Hall. At-risk students who struggle with reading fluency will have books and tapes that will give them the opportunity to understand fluent and expressive reading. Listening to audiobooks will help students build creative thinking and comprehension skills. Students will be engaged with retelling the story, answering questions about characters and plot, and sharing their favorite part of the story. Brandy Nash. Using electronic math fact games and power pins and power cards, second graders will increase their quick recall of math facts. These devices will give immediate feedback to the students and reinforce the correct answer. Students will graph their progress and be assessed three to four times per quarter. And now, we're into Oakdale, Kay Beringer. This is the second year that you have received a grant for this project. All Oakdale students will be able to use hands-on activities in the school's library's Makerspace. Additionally, the Stream Club, Science, Technology, Reading, Engineering, Art, and Math, will meet Tuesdays and Thursdays before school to work on projects of particular interest, like robotics, computer coding, and Lego engineering. Students are challenged to think outside the box to solve problems. The library is no longer a quiet space, but an active, collaborative, problem-solving And I've kind of twisted her arm. She's going to, she's going to be the program at our Fall Breakfast, so if you're interested in how libraries are morphing and doing many more active things, come to the Fall Breakfast, second Tuesday in September. Annette Hayes, Salina West. Students will gain career skills, entrepreneurial thinking, creative thinking beyond the traditional 2D and 3D art forms, and an appreciation for how art enhances life when they design shirts, banners, flags, and posters using screen printing. Students' creative work could be part of a South High or Central High school store, so students would have to consider marketing as well as the design and process of making the items. Students will gain an appreciation of how art impacts our daily lives and even how the art we choose or choose to wear makes an artistic statement and helps to create our identity. Nancy Bauer Schilling. Schilling students will receive enough ORF instruments for every child to play. The ORF method emphasizes movement, singing, playing, bard instruments like the xylophone, metalophone, and glauconspiel, and improvisation to teach musical skills and concepts. The goal is for every student to improvise and create melodies. A calendar will be created so that there are at least two lessons per grade level per month that students are using the bard instruments. Nancy also received drums from the Salina Education Foundation and did a wonderful job at our past Fall Breakfast and is also the Elementary Teacher of the Year. So, congrats, Nancy. Nikki Chamberlain, South High. Lance, this one's for you. Chemistry students will be able to do three different lab activities to determine energy changes in chemical processes. One, determine the specific heat of an unknown metal. Two, determine the energy content of different foods, after which students will make a recommendation to NASA as to what food would be best sent into space. And three, design a safe, effective, and inexpensive hand warmer. Students must then support their claim of best hand warmer with evidence and reasoning. The goal of the labs is for students to apply thermochemical principles to a relevant experience. And Melanie Hamm in South High. Students working together in pairs will design a Rube Goldberg machine that accomplishes a specific task. A Rube Goldberg machine is one that ties together many individual steps to accomplish a specific task. Think of the classic mousetrap game, how all of them work together. Each pair of students will put together five simple machines to create a compound machine that solves a particular problem. Students must then create an instruction manual with an eye-catching cover, name of the machine, a detailed sketch with all parts of the machine identified, a detailed description of what the machine does, and a troubleshooting guide. This is going to help This is going to help those parents like at Christmas Eve, put all the, right? Put all those machines together. Andrea Lilly Stewart. Four Stewart kindergarten teachers will set up their classrooms as thematic learning stations for students to rotate through one day each month. These stations include a camping theme, this is the back-to-school theme, pumpkins, folktales, gingerbread men, 100th Day of School, and hearts. Kindergarten cardiologists. Each theme will have activities that engage the student in reading, math, and STEM activities. For example, the 100th Day of School will feature counting activities. I love the idea of them being able to rotate through the classrooms. Thanks, Melinda. The 21st Century Advantage Grant is our flagship grant program. About 10 years ago, we began the Outside the Box Grant, and that grant is for projects that aren't necessarily classroom-type-related things. It may take kids on a field trip. It is not a typical classroom activity. So Outside the Box Grant recipients. Rhonda Legroon Cottonwood. The four social workers who travel back and forth between eight elementary schools will work with students using Lego therapy. The therapy is a highly structured social development program that targets students with social and communication difficulties. With a therapist guiding, students, children can learn to communicate better, express their feelings, change their behavior, create problem-solving skills, and learn to develop a positive relationship with others. Thank you. Kim Warren, Husner. Social workers will have access to a fund that helps students and their families overcome barriers to accessing resources. For example, transportation to medical and mental health appointments, clothing, emergency, food needs. Some of these, many of these are because of Salina Regional Health Foundation. We partner with them, and they are so generous with healthy lifestyle needs and early childhood needs. So if you picked up one of these sheets that explains the grants and UCSRHF, that actually is sponsored by the Salina Regional Health Foundation. Tiffany Patrick Lakewood. During a cultural crawl, seventh-grade students, South Middle and Lakewood, and I think Brenda's here. Brenda Gutierrez from United Way. She was the one who broached the subject first, so I'm glad she's here. Seventh-grade students will experience the interconnectedness of our culture and community and the relevance of culture to a community. 12 stations will be stops on the crawl. Community Access Television, Cash Hollister with Salina Arts and Humanities, and by the way, Cash is also performing at 305 Live, so put a plug in for that. Lakewood Discovery Center with the Audubon Society, Friends of the River with Kansas Wesleyan Biology students, Rolling Hills Zoo, Salina Arts Center, Salina Community Theater, Salina Public Library, Smoky Hill Museum, Sculpture Tour Salina, Salina Area, United Way, and Salina Downtown. SEF provides transportation to get the kids there and back. We're proud to be a part of that project. Thank you, Brenda. This is a project that we have funded for several years, and I think it's a wonderful project. Gina Turner, Metalark. Students who have qualified by reading books from the William Allen White Book Award list will travel to Emporia to attend Kansas's state book awards ceremony, where they will meet the winning authors and then explore historic sites in Emporia. Students will tour Red Rocks, the William Allen White House, drive by the Emporia Gazette, and visit Peter Pan Park, which was donated to the city of Emporia by White. So, thank you. Gina also presented at our Fall Breakfast, and it was fun to see what the kids remembered and what they liked. Kristen Hazel at Oakdale, third graders will travel to Halsted, Kansas to visit the Kansas Learning Center for Health. There, they will study the respiratory system by building their own functioning lungs and learn how various organs in the body relate to each other. Upon returning, meaningful discussion and review will occur about how to keep the respiratory system healthy and the importance of respiration to all parts of the body. Never injure the lungs by smoking is the overriding message. And that is sponsored by Salina Regional Health Foundation. Another extraordinary project that's been going on for a while is Michelle Palmgren, South High. This year, it will be at-risk sophomore girls who will visit a Navajo reservation, where they will work on the reservation, helping families with chores like cooking and cleaning. The girls will engage with Navajo women who openly share their stories. Students and mentors will explore social-emotional reasons for choices they make and tap into the spirit and traditions of the Navajo. Thanks for doing this. And there you have it. That's what we're doing for 2018-19. I miss Sheila Mortimer and Amber Boom. No, come right on up here. Okay, I did, okay. Sheila. Sheila, okay. Special education teacher will use the STAR Program. Oh, of course. An applied behavior analysis curriculum that targets students with autism whose maladaptive behavior disrupts their ability to function in the classroom and progress through the curriculum. The three-step program helps students follow directions and model and shape appropriate behavior responses. And that's a Salina Regional Health Foundation grant. Amber, Metalark Ridge. Students with severe emotional and behavioral disorders will continue their kindness project, this is a great project too, by doing kind deeds for others. Students will be encouraged to describe positive character traits, read facial expressions and body language, and know how to act as expected in different community situations. They will purposely visit community organizations like the Ashby House, the Fire Department, and the Animal Shelter to understand the giving nature of the work those organizations are doing and to make a gift themselves. Okay. Thank you all for allowing us this time to explain what we're doing. We're proud of our work.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you to everyone that participates in Salina Education Foundation. And our audience is full of the recipients, so, well done. Next on our agenda is approval of consent agenda items. We have the minutes of the March 27, 2018 regular meeting. Personnel report, financial reports, March bills list, March bond bills list, summary, financial reports, well, March bonds bills list, and then budget bond summary. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Madam President, I move we accept the consent agenda items as listed.
Emma Doherty, second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, six-zero. Next on the agenda is public forum. And I do have a citizens forum filled out for this evening with Brenda Gutierrez, if you can forward. And Brenda, if you just make, announce your name and address, so we can get that, and then I'm just going to read a little something for you first, before I let you get started.
Brenda Gutierrez with the Salina Area United Way, 210 East Walnut.
Thank you. As a reminder, public forum is a non-action item on the agenda. The board appreciates patrons taking time to share with us about their thoughts and concerns. This is not an appropriate time or place for patrons to make comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student. Persons making comments which violate the privacy rights of district employees and students will be asked to stop speaking or cease their remarks. If a patron or parent has a concern with one or more employees, the board will refer that person to the appropriate supervisor or to the superintendent for further review. And thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having me. School board members, superintendent Hardy, staff, parents, and our guests. At the Salina Area United Way, we fight for the education, financial stability, and health of all people. April is Financial Stability Month. So I'm here to just kind of thank you for a couple of the successes that are happening. And one specifically, last week and this week, and when you look at the USD 305 Strategic Plan and you drill down to the strategic goal of the community engagement, and you drill down under that, the partnership between school and business and organization, the recent success is, last week and this week, will be Future Finance Now. Freshmen get to experience, it's as if they're playing the game of life, thinking back, what were you doing when you were 26? Looking at what their possible income would be based on their grades and their choices of their life choices. So we have all the freshmen at both schools are participating with that. And then we have the seniors or juniors, the folks that are in the business classes, are on the other side of the table, as if they are the businesses and organizations, as well as about 28 local businesses and volunteers help. So there's the bank and the childcare, and the guys from Long Mac are selling cars or mopeds or bus passes. So it's that real life based on what is their income for one month, and then they balance their checkbook for that one month. So as one of the sponsoring organizations with communities and schools, thank you for taking this on for the financial stability side. And I want to thank all the volunteers that have helped make this happen. The other thing I wanted to note, VITA. Almost, if you haven't filed your taxes, you have almost a week left to get your taxes. The Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, and that's something that here in Salina, the Salina Area United Way sponsors. If you make generally $53,000 or less, this is a free tax assistance service. We're there till Tuesday, and I would just like to offer that that's just another thing that this community does. Volunteers put it on, people donate the space. We even have folks that donate cookies. All the things that come together in our community with the businesses to help educate and help under the areas of financial stability. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share about Future Now Finance and about VITA. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. We appreciate you coming here and presenting to the board. Next on our agenda is action agenda. Board policy review with Erin Wright.
Good evening. For our board policy, as you know, whenever we look to new policies or amend policies currently in place, it requires two readings before you can do so. At the last meeting on March 27, we had a work session where you reviewed the initial drafts of those revisions for the four policies. Currently in place, we're looking at, you should have these on your desktop, I believe. Two changes have occurred since the last time we looked at these policies, the last meeting, two recommended changes. The first one, BBE. In the first paragraph under BBER, we changed the word "shall" to "may", retain or employ special legal counsel. Otherwise, that policy remains, the recommended changes as were in place at the last meeting. And the second change is on the next policy, BCBK, which arose with discussions with one of the board members, noting that exception number seven on the first page, the exceptions to the Open Meetings Act, did not list at the time, we gave you the proposed modification, didn't list the board or individual persons as a reason to go into executive session regarding security measures. So I did check into the statute, I reviewed the statute. I'm not entirely sure why the recommended policy from KASB did not include that language, however, it is currently in the statute. So I simply put it back in, recommending that, you know, that's a valid reason for an exception to the Open Meetings Act, and it should be in place for our purposes. Any questions about that? The remaining two policies remain unchanged from what the draft was proposed to you at the last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions if you've had any in the intervening time. Otherwise, we are recommending these drafts as proposed changes to our policies.
Are there any questions, comments? Have a motion? Carol?
Madam President, I move approval of the changes in policy as recommended.
Second? Gary, second? Any other questions or comments at this time? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next on action agenda is the 2018-2019 handbooks. We will be discussing the Athletic Handbook with Dr. Hardy and the Chromebook with Lynn Exline.
Madam President, there are no proposed changes to 2018-19 Athletic Handbook. There is one update, that's what I would call this, is that for some time, it has been approved that there were eight assistant coaches for football and that has been in practice, but it was never put in the handbook like it was supposed to be done, so that has been updated and fixed. So unless there's any questions, we recommend that the 2018-19 Athletic Handbook be approved as presented.
Any questions or comments? Raise your right hand if you approve.
No motion.
Oh, no motion. Sorry, I'm ready to jump on. Need a motion, Gary.
I move that we approve the 2018-2019 Athletic Handbook as presented.
Emma Doherty, second.
Raise your right hand if you approve. Motion carries, six-zero. And the Chromebook with Lynn Exline.
There are no changes to the Chromebook handbook either. We made some changes last year and are satisfied with the handbook that's currently in place. So at this point, we're just asking for your approval, and we'll update dates and that kind of thing.
Any discussion, questions?
Madam President, I move approval of the 2018-19 Chromebook handbook as presented.
Second?
Second.
And second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, six-zero. Thank you. Next is our discussion agenda. First one is Course Proposal with Lynn Exline.
I am going to ask Mr. Showman and Mr. Stevens to join me at the microphone. They ask that we bring to you the proposal to add jazz band as a course for credit, and I'm going to let them explain the rationale for the change. We have been offering this particular course before school or during ELO time, and we've done that for years and years and years, but students have not gotten any credit toward graduation. They were just doing it as an extracurricular activity. So I'll let them explain their rationale and how this will work in the schedule.
As we've been going through and working on getting students enrolled into that eighth class, and thank you again for that opportunity to do so, we've been working with our music departments, and as we're working on not having specialty ELOs during that ELO time, the question came up, what becomes of jazz band? Jazz band at both schools is an integral part of our tradition, our culture. They sound great, it's just, it's part of our events. So when we were talking to our music directors, the idea was, let's pull jazz band into the schedule and offer it as a credit class so that we are still able to continue on both a marching band and a jazz band during the rest of the seasons. So that is why this course is being proposed to you tonight.
Don't have anything else to add, he did a really good job on that, so.
Any questions or comments?
Just a question. So this will fit into one of the class periods as an option, is that correct?
Yes.
I have a question.
Is it still true that you have to take regular band as well as jazz band?
Is that what I read? Didn't that, what, I'm sorry, didn't it say that in there somewhere?
It says it, yes.
Thank you.
That's what we have in practice right now.
And it will still be that way, even when it's, okay. Okay, yes, I see.
Do you need approval on this tonight so that the enrollment in the course can go forward as a credit course? Or is it of any value to you to do it tonight?
It would be of value to do it tonight, but it, you know, we're working through the schedule from here on out. So, I mean, if you feel like you need some more time, you certainly take it. But what our counselors are working on right now is placing those students, and immediately after the last board meeting, and again, we do appreciate you making that change, they have started reaching out to 1,000 students to find out what that option is. So a lot of the students in the band would probably be going with that, but maybe not necessarily. It just... It just allows us to move as we're placing them. What typically happens on the master schedule is, we usually have a lot of this in place before spring break. It isn't necessarily the case that it has to happen that way, but we start working through and moving the sections and assigning who's teaching what, and communicating with teachers from spring break to the end of the school year with the idea that we hopefully have an idea of who's teaching what at the end of the school year. Some of that changes a little bit with just if there's late resignations, and we want to move some of the classes over to folks that we feel have a stronger grasp, or maybe versus a new teacher who comes on board. But to that point, the quicker we move on this, it allows us to just get that done and then start spinning the schedule. But if you feel like you need more time, obviously, you take that and do what you need.
We'll find out.
Okay.
Is there anyone that would object moving it forward to action?
I'd like, I have another question.
Yes.
What's the reason for having the prerequisite to take band? And I'm only saying this because when I moved to Salina, I asked them if I could play in the jazz band, but not in the rest of the band, and they said no. So I quit playing trumpet. I mean, that was 1895, I realize. But, you know, what would be the harm of letting a kid who wants to be in jazz band? And I sat in with the jazz band when we had the tour in Mr. Showman's school, and listened to him, and they were wonderful kids, and playing piano that's not part of the band, playing guitar that's not part of the band, not part of the orchestra either. But if we had a talented piano player, why not let them play there? If you had a talented guitar player, why not let them play in there, despite the fact that they're not going to play in the other organized group?
I don't necessarily, I mean, if there's a person that exhibits that skill, my guess is the prerequisite that's in place is based to make sure that they have the skill level to be able to play, or to have the ability to develop that. In our enrollment guide, and I'm kind of pulling this from memory, so you'll have to excuse me, but it does state in there that, you know, to be in the band, especially at the high school level, there's those prerequisites that are put in place, so that they have the ability to develop the skill for it. But my guess is, and I don't know where Mr. Showman's on with this, but if I had a student that had that skill level and wanted to participate in it, there's certainly types of exceptions and things that can be put in place as we're talking and working through that with the instructor. But I think the larger part of that is, is that they also want them to be a part of the organization and be a part of the band, too. And so, you know, in that versus just somebody going in and enrolling and never have had any involvement with the background or training.
I can certainly understand not letting a kid play in the jazz band if they've never picked up a guitar before, never played a piano, I understand that, but why wouldn't we just say enrollment is to the, at the discretion of the band teacher or the jazz band instructor, if that's the case? I know they'd like to hang on to their students, and the numbers are all important to teachers, but I just worry about a kid, and I work with the kids in 305 Live, that every now and then we find a kid who's not in the choir or not somewhere, and we try to find a way to let them participate, and they really enjoy that.
I think your suggestion is a very good suggestion. I think that we very well may have some students who could play the electric guitar, but are not in the band, and with the way the description is written, that would preclude them from being in this class. So what I would suggest is that we don't take it for a vote tonight, that instead, we go back and we talk to the two band instructors, suggest that to them, and get a revised description for you. But I'd, and I'd like to have their support and engage in a conversation with them about that. I think it warrants some discussion on our end.
Well, thank you if you're willing to do that.
There's a sentence in the description that really qualifies the whole thing as being dependent upon the instructor. Says admission is based on the recommendation of the instructor and depends upon student's disposition and performance experience. So I'm assuming that if the line in dark type were removed, the rest of it would stay, don't you think? But I think it's worth going back to visit about.
So we'll suggest to them that we just strike that line that's in dark type and come back to you at the next meeting, if that's okay?
I appreciate it.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you, we'll look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our Discussion Agenda is Proposed Textbook Adoptions with Lynn Exline.
Each year at this time, we are ready to do our USD 305 textbook adoptions, and I want to just talk to you a little bit about each one of those, so that you have an understanding of what our staff was looking for when they selected a text to recommend to you. We looked at texts in several AP classes this year, several math classes, we did have a couple middle school classes, and so I want to go through each one of those and the process that we used, just briefly. We always start with board policy when we're doing a textbook review, and there is policy that you have in place that says that there are certain things that we need to be looking for when we're looking for instructional materials. And so we create a document that we weigh every single text that we look at against, and on that document, we're looking at effective education for all students, we're looking at the factual knowledge, the way the content's represented, and that whole idea of developing critical thinking and communication, which is a very nice tie to that Kins and Scan vision that is currently in our policy, when we're asking kids to really be able to think and communicate. The next thing that we look at is the standards and curriculum, and we do a curriculum update prior to any text adoption, and then we actually look for individual standards or individual competencies as we're going through the text materials. We look for effective instructional strategies, and the teachers also add any teacher criteria, things that are important to them, that they know are really important in their particular discipline. So the secondary process is that teachers from all buildings that are impacted by the adoption, they are allowed to participate in the review process. I think it's really important that teachers are able to get their hands on the materials and look at the materials and feel comfortable with what it is that we're suggesting to adopt. So we do the curriculum revisions, and then they develop the review criteria and add to what it is that I give them from board policy. They write the recommendation paragraphs, so the paragraphs that are actually in your packet are the paragraphs that the teachers have written that actually did conduct the review. And then they helped us identify what should be ordered. At that point, then, our procedure has been that we go for quotes from the vendor, so you know exactly what it is that I'm asking you to approve, because these are expensive adoptions, and it is something that we keep for multiple years. So I want to start with AP Biology. Any AP classes, it's an advanced placement class, and the curriculum in that class is actually determined by the college board. The text features that our AP Biology teachers really wanted, that they found in the text that they're recommending to you, strong pre-post tests, the text is actually designed for an advanced placement class, and that was important to them, because that helps them better prepare kids to take the exam, which leads to college credit. The online resources were strong, and then there was an AP Test Bank, again, a way for teachers to have access to questions that are at the level of rigor that our students would encounter on the AP test, and would increase their chances of being able to pass that test. In Algebra and Precalculus, our math departments have been working for several years on which standards are taught in the high school sequence, and the standards at the state level were just revised last summer, and so they did some additional revision based upon shifts that happened at the state level. They were looking for texts that were strong in the standards for mathematical practice, and that's where you see that communication and reasoning and critical thinking, those board outcomes that we are looking for in a text adoption are strong in the standards of mathematical practice. They were looking for a text that really promoted conceptual understanding, and some, they were very excited about the tutorial videos that were available in the Algebra II text, and then in the Precalc text, there was a strong homework support component. So those things were important to them, the online investigation tools, and then they were very happy that there were some Spanish audio links. There were English audio links, too, but they pointed out the Spanish piece, because a lot of times, our students that are just learning English can be highly successful in a math classroom, and it's a, it's a great place to experience success, and this would just support them even more in upper-level mathematics. So that was a positive that they stated. Our physics teachers, the physics teachers from the two high schools have been working together to revamp curriculum, and they were looking for conceptual development. You're going to see some similarities between math and science, career connections, and that whole idea of why does physics matter in the real world. And so they have picked a text that has a section that actually is called Why It Matters, and it has applications to everyday life, and shows how the different physics concepts can be seen in daily life. There were strong online simulations, and then they really have been working in our science classrooms to get students reading science text, and so they were excited to find some STEM readings that were incorporated into this particular series. In AP Social Studies, we actually did, we're recommending to you three adoptions. Again, an AP class, that curriculum is determined by the college board. And we, in AP Government and Politics, we, they were excited about the formative and summative assessments, and they really felt like this book had strong content standard alignment. In AP Gopo, it's interesting, there were not very many texts to review. We were only able to find three that met our criteria of a recent publication date. And so they were very, they called me and said, you know, if we don't like one of these, can we delay? And of course, my answer was yes, we're going to wait and buy a text that's appropriate, but they were very happy with the text that they're bringing to you as a recommendation. In AP US History, the document-based questions were strong at this level and change over time. And those questions that really get kids to deal in, dig into a document and be able to cite textual evidence, and be able to compare events over time, very important in an AP history class. On the AP exam, critical, and so exposure to those, and having a resource that actually provides those for you, so our teachers aren't developing them, is a really strong addition to our course. AP World History, they found a resource that has some strong primary sources, they were excited about that. And then an online student management system that would allow them to effectively use the Chromebook to assign assignments to students, collect assignments, and so it had a neat technology component that they felt like would work really well with what they're doing in our classes. High School CTE, we are recommending two different adoptions. In a CTE class, the curriculum is actually based on KSDE competencies, and so it's a little bit different than standards. The competencies are actually developed in combination with teachers and business and industry leaders. And so in those career and technical education classes, we're trying to identify what are the, what are the interests and aptitudes that students need to be able to be employable, and then also what are the content skills that they have to be able to have to be successful in that particular career field. So in Intro to Human Services, they found a text that has some good online student resources, that strong alignment with competencies they felt was important, easily navigable. So, and then finally, in Web Page Design, they're, in this particular class, one of the challenges is finding instructional materials that align with the industry standard, because things are changing so rapidly in this industry. So they found a text that has coding instruction and software that really does have that industry standard language, and they were excited about that. Again, online resources, and you see the critical thinking and problem solving again. At the middle school level, they followed a similar process, all of the teachers were involved, they developed the criteria. We use the National Family and Consumer Science standards as the basis for the middle school curriculum. And the reason for that is there are not CTE state standards in this particular area, but this is a course that we offer. So when we update, we update using those national fact standards. The text features that they really wanted, they were looking for support materials, and they were looking for something that was tightly aligned to those standards, and then suggestions, excuse me, suggestions for curriculum integration. Sixth Grade World History, last year, we did do a sixth grade, we looked at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and this group delayed. They did not find something that they wanted, and so we waited, because there were several publishers that were releasing materials, and so they did find a resource this year that they felt was a good match for our standards. They really were looking at readability that was appropriate for sixth grade level, that blend of being able to use different text features, because it's important for students to learn that, and social studies is a perfect place for us to engage students in using text, pictures, graphics, to really build understanding. The Adaptive Learning Center, this is an elementary adoption, the next two are elementary. The Adaptive Learning Center is a low-incidence special education program. This is a self-contained program, and the curriculum in this class is based upon the KSD standards, but it really is driven by the IEP. So we really need a different math resource for our Adaptive Learning Center than we do for our other students. We needed something that was very skill-based and that was supportive of individualized instruction. We found a resource that we're recommending to you that is specifically designed for kids that have the most challenging, challenges to learning, and so tier-three level academic support, so some strong weaving of concepts throughout, and constant review is helpful at this level. Strong use of manipulatives, modeling, and connections. So even though we're doing a different curriculum, same kinds of things that you heard in math at the high school level, that we were looking for resources that had the connections, the communication, the modeling. And then the last adoption is Elementary Math. This is the Engage New York Eureka Math that you've been hearing about. We have been working on curriculum revisions during Summer Academy. One of the holes that we saw in our math program in our current text was fractions. And so in 2016, we piloted just the fractions unit at fourth grade. And our kids came out of fourth grade knowing more than was in our current fifth-grade text series, and so the following year, we put in that fifth-grade unit to support that, positive, positive response. Teachers were asking, can we keep adding, can we keep adding? And I said, at some point, this becomes an adoption. And so that is why I'm here. We, what we know about Eureka Math, also called Engage New York, is there is a strong alignment with those math practices, the same thing I discussed in that Algebra II Precalc adoption. Conceptual understanding is underlying in this, the strong math vocabulary, and it really does build students' reasoning. Students will learn the same concepts that they have been learning, but the discussion and the reasoning, I encourage you to get out into a classroom at the elementary level next year, once teachers get their grounding, should you approve this, and see what you think. So with that, I am open to questions. I do have the materials in the office, and I have all the review forms. You can look through all the review forms if you'd like to, you're welcome to come down and look through the materials as well, and then I would be back next week, next meeting, for the actual approval, to give you time to look at the materials, should you wish.
Any questions, comments? Just curious, are there supportive materials with math and/or science, or any of the others that have to be purchased, like manipulatives and those type of things?
Right. Typically, on a science adoption, they are part of the adoption. In math, in this particular adoption, they are not, and so we will be providing, there are certain manipulatives that they need for each one of the units, and we will be having to purchase those as well. The thing about the Engage New York is that we will not be purchasing teachers manuals, I don't know if you noticed that, and that's odd. The development of that program was done with grant dollars, and so what we will purchase are the student materials that Eureka Math has, and then we, our teachers really like the loose-leaf copy of the manual that you can print, you can download and print from the website. So we, but we will have some manipulatives that we will need to purchase for them to be able to do the activities with students.
Okay, so are they going through what manipulatives we have now?
They are. What we've asked them to do is, we've given them a list of, here are all of the units that will be taught at kindergarten through fifth grade, and here are the manipulatives that are needed for instruction, and they are pooling their manipulatives right now and figuring out, okay, we have three class sets of this, but we don't need that at kindergarten, we're going to move that to first grade. That's what we're working on right now, and that's the reason that we're not purchasing those yet. I've asked them to have that done by, like, that first week after school is out, to try to give some time, because I'm afraid if we ask people to do that right now, we're going to end up finding things in the bowels of the building as the end of the year winds down, and we'll have ordered things that we don't need to spend money on.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, we do have a process in place for that.
Okay.
If you, if you're interested, Cornado has already kind of combined all of theirs, and they have created a manipulative room that is something to behold. So, other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your consideration, and stop by if you'd like to see any of the samples.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on with Shannon Rectorer to 2018, 2019 handbooks. And the handbooks involve elementary, middle school, and high school.
I thought I was asleep. We all saw it. Well, I'll talk to you a little bit about the handbook review process. Basically, each year, we have the principals at the buildings go through the handbooks and make recommendations on any things that need to be added, deleted, or just kind of making sure that what's in the handbook is also the, the process that's being used at the schools. And so the first set that you have there, you have the elementary handbook and these are the changes that we're looking at. The principals made suggestions, they replied back and forth to each other to make sure everybody was in the same loop. And then I met with them probably about a week ago to kind of finalize all of the wording and making sure that they were all in consensus. And so as you look at this, the first thing that we have on there is about attendance and absences and this is with a blanket note. And really, this is just a modification of a process that's been in place for a very long time. And what we were finding is that the wording in that was a little confusing to our parents, really across all grade levels. And so we basically took the language and modified it to where it was universal from elementary, middle school, and high school, added some terminology to show that the blanket note was what was being referred to. And then there was some information in there about signing a release and providing other documentation and really that was taken care of within the form itself. And so we just took that information out of the handbook because the, the form explains it and we were wanting to try to reduce confusion. The next thing that we have is safety to and from school. And so you'll see here that we added some information about bicycles. And so one of the things that they didn't have in there was anything about bicycle locks. And so the principals really wanted to be able to recommend strongly that our elementary students that ride their bicycles lock that during the day. And so that was a phrase that they wanted to add to the handbook. Within that same area, we see that we have bus regulations. And those bus regulations are the same ones that we see in the middle school handbook, so these have been approved in the past. And it's basically to give a little bit more guidance and structure to the elementary parents regarding bus offenses. Now, there is a process in the sense that when there is a bus offense, the administrators are working with the families, working with the students and making sure that there's appropriateness and the consequence and the conversations and the teaching that needs to go on to, to change any behavior. But we did want to make sure that the parents had full understanding of what those kind of consequences would be and that the fact that there is a progressive kind of consequence, making sure that, we tried to reteach during the, the time, but there is a chance that your student could be removed from the bus if the, if the, if the behavior elevates and puts any kind of safety or danger in place on that bus. I guess safety stays in place, but we want to make sure there's no dangerous situations. Then we have bullying and the bullying wording that you see within this is also from the middle school and the high school handbooks. And so this is modified from the policy, the very long policy that we have in board policy. And so this is the wording that we're using in the secondary handbook and we wanted to be consistent with this in the elementary. So we removed some of the more basic information that we had in the elementary book. With visitors, at the elementary level, we wanted to provide some clarification to parents to identify that when they're bringing outside food and drinks into the lunchroom, we want to be very accommodating to our parents and understanding that we have parents that, you know, that precious time that they may be able to come into the lunchroom, we want to be able to recognize that sometimes they may bring in fast food or they may bring in something that may cause a little bit of commotion or interest of the other students in that lunchroom. And so there may be, if they have lots of family members coming in with them at lunchtime, they'll have a separate area in the lunchroom, but trying to be very accommodating, but also asking our parents to, to check with the school about what are those guidelines and recommendations because we also have to be very cognizant of, of our lunchroom rules and so forth. And then the next one that you'll see is on bands and strings. There was an adjustment in program offering and so we wanted to make sure that the handbook reflected that correctly. And I think you may have seen that information before, but really, what we're focusing on here is bands and strings is going to be offered in the fifth grade and it is in four, two 30-minute sections and that is a reduction in the fact that fourth grade, they are making a, a change there and no longer offering that so that way we can, you know, put our focuses on some of the other aspects of that program. Then we look at homework and makeup policy and recognizing that there are times where there may be homework outside of just the fourth and fifth grade. And so the principals asked if we would go ahead and remove that designation of fourth and fifth grade only. And then you'll see that how to help students succeed is the, the next piece there. And what we see there is before, it just talked about television and we know that in this ever-changing world, that television is not the only thing that may distract students from family time and focus time. And so they wanted to add that limiting screen time would help students be succeed, to succeed. And they offered cell phones, electronic devices, gaming, and then also left television there. So it just really kind of expanded that definition a little bit for parents. And then you'll see the last thing for elementary is that we have reporting to parents. And so really, it's expansion of that standard reference grading process that our district is using. And so there are no longer the letter grades at fourth and fifth grade, so this is just to illustrate that this is our practice that we'll have with K5 progress reports, we'll actually identify very specific information on skills, on those standards. So I'll entertain any questions on the elementary before I move forward.
I have one.
See any? You do?
Yeah, on strings, I know that the district went from three to two instructors several years ago. Would this, and maybe this is for Lynn, was this, would they, would the teachers be recommending this change if the district still had three strings instructors instead of just two?
I, I can't answer that question. What I can tell you is that we, that we can't, we changed from fourth grade strings to adding that section at the middle school because our middle school classes were getting to be 55, 60 kids at the seven, eight level. Do I think it would have come forward if we still had the three teachers? Probably not because we probably would have been able to do that split and, and continue fourth grade. Now, they did, when they came to me though, the argument that they were making was really that they were losing, they were losing so many kids between fourth grade and fifth grade that I, they were concerned, you know, about half of the kids weren't continuing. And so kids were trying out strings, knowing from the very beginning, I'm going to go to band. And they were taking the very first opportunity that we had to be able to do an instrument in a music class. And so I think that they were, they still were saying, the initial proposal was, they thought we needed to step away from fourth grade. Now, I, but I can't answer how they would answer that question exactly.
And from my perspective, I just worked with the principals to make sure that the handbook was looking at common practice.
Any questions, other questions, comments?
Okay, so now we'll look at the, the middle school handbook and really, the very limited changes here. South Middle School did want to update some terminology that they were using and they were changing the term cougar time to advisory and really doing that to kind of reinforce the importance of that course and the fact that those teachers are going to be working with the students to advise them in many different things, both, you know, all aspects of that middle school life. And so changing from cougar time to advisory time, as you'll see for South Middle School, which was not basically an issue at Lakewood. Lakewood is already referring to it as advisory time. And then you'll see, again, the blanket doctor's note. This is basically adjusting the terminology to make it consistent at each school and wanting, again, to make sure that the parents had the information that they need in, in a form that was clear and didn't cause confusion. Any questions about middle school? And from the high schools' perspective, the only change again is that the blanket doctor's note and to get it consistent across all of our K-12 buildings. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Capital Improvement Plan with Chris Hupson.
It's that time. Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 19. The process that we use to develop this plan is twofold. One is I work with my maintenance directors on the things that folks don't see in a building to determine service life and the repairs that need to happen there. And then the other piece of that is the, to listen to the schools, principals, and building operators. I receive requests for capital improvement projects throughout the year and I compile those around this time and start racking and stacking them and determining which ones will be capital improvement projects versus regular maintenance projects versus something that we're not going to do and, and put all that together. First thing is I'd like to talk about fiscal year 17, 18, and per board policy, I'm supposed to come tell you all the projects that we did. And I was just sitting next to Lisa and she showed me the balance and the bond and we've spent $110 million. There's, there's a little bit left in there. And so that's been a huge focus for maintenance and operations over the last three years is kind of supporting the, the bond effort and spending that money well, which I believe that we have. So you'll notice that many of the big projects, larger projects that we completed in fiscal year 17, 18, were in support of shoring up some of the bond work. I like to organize it by category and that kind of helps me determine where the main effort is. So we look at plumbing, for example, which is the, which is the red one there. We did South High School and Central High School outside water lines. So the city has water mains that run all over the city and because our high school campuses are so large, we basically have water mains that run through our property that connect to the building. And those are our water lines that we are responsible for maintaining, even though they kind of look like and act like a city water line. So what we did on these two projects is we replaced those aging water lines to bring them up to city standards with the hopes of the city taking over those water lines as water lines that they maintain. And that's helpful for us in the long run. Parking lot, just jumping up, the roof repairs, we did two or three years ago, Mike Nolan brought to the board a company that would do inspections on our roofs. That company did a pretty thorough inspection of every, all of our roofs over the, it took them all summer and then some, and put together recommendations on repairs, recommendations on replacements and kind of developed a five-year plan for us. We were, we were executing these roof repairs based on their recommendations and that all, that all has happened in the last year. Concrete work, we did a parking lot at Opportunity Now.
Oh, I have a question about the roofs. Are those a 30- or 50-year roof?
There is no such thing.
Oh, okay. Because some of the insurance companies went to put that long-term roof on, you know, and.
Right.
I just was going to ask, thank you.
You know, it dawned on me that we have a work session tonight and we can commiserate about roof length and warranty and all that. I've learned a bunch on that.
Well, thank you.
There are commercial roofs and should last every bit of 30 years.
Gotcha, thank you.
The parking lot at Opportunity Now, what was once a gravel parking lot is now a paved parking lot, which is helpful there. Walking trail of cottonwood to help us complete our, our marathon walking and exercise for the little ones. Crack ceiling of the Central High student parking lot, which will, which is underway, will happen, it's not underway, but it's under contract and will happen this summer to finish up there, kind of in conjunction with the work that's going to finish up at the stadium. The Central High School kitchen equipment, we, we knew that we had to replace the boilers in the basement at Central and that was part of a capital improvement project approved in the past. We were able to get that work done by way of the bond project, but those boilers in the basement provided steam that helped, that, that's what the serving equipment ran off of, was steam from those boilers. And that's not really the way that they do it anymore. Kitchen units are standalone now and provide, make their own steam. So you just plug it in and has a drain on it and away you go. So we knew that if we tore out these boilers that were failing, we didn't want to put boilers back, we wanted to have standalone kitchen equipment, which was a lot easier to maintain. So that project was to provide that server equipment for the Central High School kitchen. High School marquee signs, both, both signs at both high schools was capital improvement that we executed by way of the bond contractor using capital improvement dollars. And then scissor lift and skid steer. Any questions about our highlights for our completed projects over the last two years? Okay, we'll get into the plan. So my, my office's priorities are first and foremost, the safety of students and staff. And generally speaking, a project doesn't make it on the capital improvement plan if it's a number-one priority. Generally speaking, we make sure that that happens and if that has to come to you as a separate project or it's underneath a dollar threshold, we make those happen. Protection of district assets is the second one and predominance, you'll see a blend of protection of district assets as a primary focus for a project and then delivery of program and aesthetics are kind of three and four in that regard. So this is the, the overview for fiscal year 19. We're projecting a $1.8 million budget. What should be noted there is that we're planning on using set-aside dollars. We've got set-aside for roofs and we've got set-aside for HVAC and we've got set-aside for turf and some of MIS's gear. So roofing and HVAC is a set-aside account, savings account essentially, where we know that we're going to end up, you know, we don't want to get down the road and discover we have no money and we have to do a $500,000 roof replacement. So we're using that RSI roof report to kind of project out what money we'll need and start to replace the roofs that we need to replace. That's what this item under, under this fiscal year is. In addition, our heating and ventilation units, most of which are circa 1999, 2000 bond. And so those are, many of them are starting to reach the end of their lifespan. That doesn't mean we won't keep them running because we have good people that'll keep them running. However, if we don't start replacing them, we could get into a situation where we have kind of a catastrophic failure across the district and it could be a, a financial problem. So we have set-aside for that. The intention is that we're going to start replacing those before they fail critically so that we can start getting ahead of this potential problem. Building security is, and I can just jump into the, I've got detailed slides on all of them. I figure the board is relatively new and we'll just do a deep dive so that you all understand what's in the plan. So roofing, we have three sections. A section is if most of our roofs, except, well, all of them now, we don't have just one roof. We have a roof for the original building and then we have a roof for an addition that happened and then another roof for something else. So if you think about it, you take the lids of a shoebox and turn them upside down, each of those kind of represent a roof section. And when you put all those together, when you look at it from an aerial picture, you can see that, well, that's that roof and that's a different roof and it may be the same material, it may not be. So we talk in terms of roof sections. We're, we're projecting or wanting to replace three roof sections at South High on the, obviously on the existing part of the building, not the new stuff that we're, is just being installed now. And then a partial replacement of one section at Schilling. And then our HVAC plan is to, is to replace all the rooftop units at Coronado Elementary. And then we have a smaller project for a furnace and condensing unit at Heartland. For building security, we are, we have shifted priorities in light of the goings-on in the world and we are trying to bring inside cameras into our two middle schools, much the same as we'll have at the high schools. We felt like rather than go to the, the original plan was to go to the grade schools and put electronic card readers on all the exterior doors. Right now, they're just at the main entries. Rather than do that as a priority to move the middle schools up to give us the flexibility to use that technology to, to help us. So that's a, that's a $200,000-plus ask to be able to do that and it takes a So that's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus ask to be able to do that, and it takes a pretty significant chunk out of our, what we try to, what we shoot for, for our annual budget for capital improvement projects. Flooring is another one. Most of our flooring is two-thousand flooring, so it's eighteen years old. And as I put this plan together, I toured all the schools, met with building operators, wanting to get a better sense of, a snapshot in time of what does worn-out carpet look like. Worn-out carpet for one person is not worn-out carpet for a different, you know, another person. So I'm kind of individually trying to do that and assess where we're at. What I do know is, much like our HVAC equipment, we don't want all of our flooring to be terrible at one time, so we need to start phasing in replacements of that stuff to limit the need for catastrophe where we feel like we have to pass a bond to solve a problem. So we're budgeting and kind of phasing a carpet replacement. And so you can see that we have, when I have these projects listed up there, that does not mean we're replacing the carpet in the entire school. It means we've chosen selective classrooms where that the flooring is in rough shape, and we're going to replace it, and we'll kind of hopscotch around through the district in years to come to get carpet replaced. And it's not always carpet, sometimes it's tile. And then our multipurpose rooms is another one where that's a thirty-five to forty-thousand-dollar today's dollars to replace the multipurpose room flooring in our grade schools. And so it does not typically last as long as a gym floor does, so it kind of resides at the grade school level where we have this issue, and so a staggered way that we'll replace those floors and get them back to where they need to be as well. Building grounds, listed a couple of projects on there. The new batting cage at South High, they've asked for that for a while. They have a practice field and another practice field, but they have a primary practice field, and I think this is good for the program to be able to give the baseball team access to their batting cage that's not being used by other folks and kind of keep our stuff nicer. Replacement of a storage shed at Lakewood Middle School. Again, by way of the bond, we've been making efforts to get our sheds at our different facilities up to snuff. Our middle schools need quite a large outdoor, or quite a large shed to hold all the equipment that we assign to them to maintain the grounds, and so this is one of the last ones to do to get us up to par on that. And then installation of turf at Coronado Playground. Coronado Playground, the turf went bad. We turned it in under warranty, and the warranty covered the turf, but it did not cover the installation of the turf. So a big semi truck showed up with big rolls of turf. So we have the turf, we need to install the turf, and I'm working on solving that problem, but the initial price for that was pretty significant, and it warranted getting put on the capital improvement plan for that. But I'm trying to work through that. Wonderful to get gifts, and it's a wonderful playground, and sometimes we don't estimate out properly the maintenance costs of keeping some of that stuff up and going. I'm working on that. That's what this project is.
When you're talking turf, you're talking grass?
I'm talking the fake grass, artificial grass.
Okay, okay.
So Coronado has a huge place, I think the largest in the city, if not, close to the state. It's huge. And it's all nice and turf underneath, and that turf failed under warranty, so. Equipment, we're also, as I was putting this plan together, I was looking, and it was like, everything's the same age. What is happening? It's like, and our equipment's the same way, our lawn mowers and everything to maintain our facilities are all about the same age, and so we're starting to phase in replacement of that, those pieces of equipment. And I look at, we don't really have a great formula for that, but it's much like trade in your car. You know, at what point do you get maximum trade in value towards a newer one, and then you get rid of the maintenance problems that you had? And so we try to go through that arithmetic with all of our equipment, and some of our equipment is up, is kind of in the prime spot right now to be, to replace it. And then new outside bleachers for South Middle School. We have the new bleachers that were installed two summers ago at Lakewood. South Middle is still kind of splintery, so we're, we feel like this is a good project to get, bring some equity to both of our middle schools. And then vehicles, much the same as our riding lawn mowers. We look at our vehicles the same way when the sweet spot is. We're looking at a new shop truck, a new service, food service box truck, and a new van for Opportunity Now. Concrete, variety of concrete work that needs done. I think the worst concrete situation we have is at Sunset now, and so we've got a fairly significant project to fix the sidewalks around the school. We've got some settling and some cracking and some marginally unsafe things that we're trying to solve there. That's what that project is. Cottonwood as well has the sidewalk that runs around the school settling, so it settles, and then you try to plow it, but your plow blade is riding on the curb, and the sidewalk is below the curb, so you can't get the snow off. So then you end up with an icy, slippery situation kind of all around the school, and it's just, it's not a good situation. And then Heartland, an expansion of their parking lot with program changes over there, and because they're itty-bitty ones, you don't just drop your kid off and let him walk in, you have to park your car and walk your child in. And so we're trying to adjust their parking lot to facilitate that and allow that to happen in a safer manner.
Do we have enough space out there? Aren't we kind of limited at Heartland?
We are limited. We're going to go the south parking lot, which, which I don't know if I would consider that the main parking lot or not, but the south one, we're looking at going east with that, and it's a twofer because we've got a whole bunch of trees over there, big evergreen trees, and apparently it's, I get calls on it twice a year for loitering in the wee hours and kind of the problems that it attracts folks doing unsavory things, so. Electrical install parking lot lights at Heartland. This is not on the south parking lot, but on the north end of their school. It's been noted that you leave in the night, and there's no lights. There's no lights on the building, there's no lights in the parking lot. Potential for having an unsafe situation. I think we can solve that one for a reasonable amount of money, and so that's on the list. And then the burying of electrical service lines at South Middle with the additions at South Middle School, the gym. We've moved some things, and the overhead power lines kind of run right through their kickball area and their fields outside. So we'd like to bring those underground. We're in, working with Westar to figure out how to do that. This is the project for that. We've got an estimate on what that'll take, but that'll clean up our outdoor space there. That's the plan. Can I answer your questions? Yes, sir.
On the Heartland improvements, they're a, you know, federal Head Start program, and they cover, what, three counties, I think? Is there a different funding source, or is that the same funding source that all of our other capital improvements come from?
The answer to that is both, and Lisa can step in if she needs to. I know that from my end, sometimes we use our capital dollars to work on the building, and sometimes she's able to find grant money or other money. And so if we have a project that's approved on here, and she's able to find money, what we like to do is say, hey, you've got grant money, let's use your grant money to solve this problem that we would, otherwise we're going to solve, but you have money available through the Fed to do that.
Yeah, that's accurate. It depends on the year and whether they've filed a separate grant addition in order to do something like property or equipment or renovations, because it has to be a separate grant approval for that. So we would have to see if those funds are available and if they would file a grant for some of that. Otherwise, a lot of times, we provide those renovations or those building improvements, and we've been in a partnership. They count that as an in-kind donation as a part of their funding source, so it's been a partnership throughout the years, both ways.
Okay. But Lisa, let's say those kids that we help at Heartland also go to Bennington High or Solomon or somewhere. Those schools don't participate in this with us?
No.
Okay.
And remind me, do we get any funds from any other districts for the maintenance of Opportunity Now, since we have kids coming from other schools to that?
Not that I'm aware.
No. So that would be, Opportunity Now is part of the overall co-op budget, and so anything we receive from other districts would be through the assessment process. And we pay for all the, we own the buildings, we pay for, well, I think we own the buildings.
We own the building, we don't own the land.
Yeah, okay. And we pay for, we pay for all of that, and the majority of the students are USD 305 students.
Right.
The only time I remember where we've assessed co-op districts for renovations is at the Hagaman location, and that's when we did a separate assessment for those Hagaman, for that Hagaman remodel. But other than that, we haven't.
Any other questions?
I have one other.
Carrie, thank you.
If we do renovations to carpet, like you talked about, and it looks like we picked out maybe the worst classrooms in several schools, is that kind of how we did, the ones that were most worn out?
Yes, sir.
Are we guaranteed that, let's say Coronado had four classes that really need to be redone with new carpet, are we guaranteed that in two years, when we go back and there's some more classrooms at Coronado, are we guaranteed we can still find the same pattern of carpet and all that to be somewhat consistent? Or is that not a prerequisite, is that not something we really shoot for? I'm trying to think if we're consistent, at least building by building.
We shoot for it, and we fail every time, to be honest. Because this sheet carpet, like that's on the stage here, is an older, that's not very common anymore, and I think they used to make this carpet, and they made it for a long, long, long time.
I think I had some in one of my offices.
And so it was easier to match, because it's not a pattern deal. It's pretty, it's speckled carpet that's kind of green, and away we go. What we do now is we do carpet tile. So the advantage to, and to answer your question, they do discontinue the patterns. They usually have one, a pattern that's in the same family, and it's pretty hard to tell from classroom to classroom that it's a different pattern carpet. What the carpet tile allows us to do is allows us, I think the carpet tile and the sheet carpet last about the same amount of time. What the tile allows us to do is to keep the carpet looking nicer longer. It'll last about the same time, but we're not into, if you've got a stain on a tile, you pull a tile up and put a new one down. So we order attic stock with our projects, so the building operator will have a couple cases of the carpet squares in their building, and when they have a problem that they can't solve, they pull that tile up and put a new one down, and away we go. Spills and such happen.
And we went to carpet instead of floor tile because?
We've gone to more floor tile, actually, but we do carpet in the classrooms, especially at the kindergarten level, for sound reasons and for safety reasons. But most of them have a tile portion, so in our classrooms where we have a sink or a drinking fountain, we'll try to do tile from the hallway and then adjoining that space so that they can, when they drip their hands or whatever, it doesn't get on the carpet. We're also trying, speaking of tile, we're trying to get away from the vinyl composite tile, which is what's in this room, and this tile requires stripping and waxing on a pretty regular basis to maintain the life of the floor. It is the cheapest floor, however, which is kind of why institutions and school districts have it. We're trying to elevate ourselves to a vinyl composite tile, VCT, which is not, or correction, a luxury vinyl tile, which isn't really luxury. I don't know, I think they do that to sell it. But it doesn't, it's got a wear layer on top of it like a fake wood floor you would have at your house, maybe, the click-together stuff. So you just mop it. You don't have to buff it and wax it. We spend lots of man-hours buffing and waxing floors, and this is, I think, a much better solution for leveraging the workforce and a better-looking floor longer.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Carol, I'll start with you, school report.
Really didn't attend any meetings. I would just simply say that it was nice to see that at the community theater production of Tuck Everlasting, there were a number of USD 305 youngsters, and of course, one of the 305 oldsters was very much involved with that production. It was nice to see him on stage, so, yeah, it was a fun thing.
I'll just dovetail right into that, Carol.
I thought maybe.
I will, I was at Lakewood, meeting with all their music classes, and we had someone from 305 Live there, and it was really fun, working with the teachers and the students, showing them what 305 Live is and answering their questions. So that was a fun day. And then I also went to the community theater last week on Friday afternoon, no, Thursday afternoon, excuse me, because Nathan Tyson, who Carol was just referring to, was talking to all the fourth graders in town, and the education foundation paid for their transportation, and the teachers did a marvelous job of preparing the kids. They're all reading the book, Tuck Everlasting. So Nathan got to meet with half the fourth graders at a time for an hour or two and talk to them about writing the lyrics for the musical, and he sang some of the music. He had Ryan McCall, another Salina South grad that's a friend of Nathan's, playing the piano for him. It was just marvelous. And I cannot believe how Nathan kept two-hundred-and-ninety or three-hundred kids' rapt attention to what he was doing. I would never have any luck doing that, but when you have somebody with that kind of credential and that ability, that he's got some sort of magic, but those kids were eating it up and loving it, and it was just really great to see the opportunity they had.
Thank you. Anne?
I attended Heartland Policy Council, and they have not yet received the letter from the Federal Review, or at least they hadn't last Thursday, but they felt good about it and felt like the Federal Review went very well. One of the big things was that two staff members had just returned from Washington, DC, and they had a full day of meetings with national Head Start staff. It was of the twelve Head Start regions in the United States. Each region has got to send two people from one program in the region. And so Salina's USD 305 Heartland Programs was the one from our region, and they, the purpose was to let the national staff hear how things are going across the country, and they were just really excited about the time they had and felt like the national staff was really listening. They also got to have small group meetings with the twelve other programs from across the country, including Brooklyn, New York, and rural Wyoming, and all sorts of different, very different programs across the country. Anyway, they were thrilled about that experience, and they learned a lot. The one other thing I can tell you from that meeting is that the Big Touch a Truck Night at Heartland Programs is on Tuesday, April seventeenth, from 5:30 to 6:30, and I think the size has doubled since last year, the number of trucks. So you get to hop up inside a fire truck, and I think they're even having, trying to get a helicopter to fly in, and I'm not quite sure about that, but it's big time. That's all. Thank you.
Kate?
Nothing official to report. I'll be at Future Finance Now, bright and early tomorrow morning at Central. I'll be at Touch a Truck with my day job. We have a fire truck. All the kids think you're way cooler standing next to a fire truck than when they find out you're a realtor, so. That will be exciting. Thank you to our staff members and Salina NEA members that were in Topeka late Saturday night for their lobbying, working advocacy.
I too want to ditto those teachers that were at the legislature at Topeka and wearing their red t-shirts and rooting for the finances to help our school system. wearing the red t-shirts and rooting for the finances to help our school system and truly enjoying learning more about the Salina Educational Foundation and meeting those that were received grants here tonight. That was very nice and otherwise, no other report.
Okay, thank you. I did attend Salina Education Foundation allocations and grants. That took about, what you saw happen here, it took us about two and a half hours to, to do. And that was on, the grants were two and a half hours and, or allocations were two and a half hours, grants were probably close to three hours for interviewing. So those were on two separate days. And it's a real delight to know that we have the money there and the capability to help teachers help students.
And help us.
Yes, help us. So what all took place out here, I have to thank SEF and Pam McIntyre for doing all of that. I too went to, as a trustee with SEF, I went to Tuck Everlasting on Thursday morning with another room full of fourth graders and, and I just happened to have my three grandsons with me. And all three of them had already read Tuck Everlasting because their dad's best friend is Nathan Tyson. And they had also attended the, in New York at, on Broadway at Sawtuck. And they marveled at how Nathan stood there and read portions of the book and told how he took this section of the book and transposed it into the song. And it was beautiful at how he, he used the references that there's a pause here and what can we do with the pause in the book and how can we associate that with the song and how he begins to do a song. So that, that was wonderful for students and he just really had them in the palm of his hand, I think. And it was, it is wonderful to know that one of our own has made it big time on the stage, so. With that, upcoming dates of importance are Saturday, April 21st, legislative meeting at the Chamber at 8:30 a.m., Tuesday, April 24th, Salina Stadium ribbon cutting at 4:30, Sunday, May 6th, retirement reception and recognition at Lakewood at 3:00, Thursday, May 10th, DCP graduations, Salina West at 4:00 p.m., Sunday, May 13th, Thurla graduations, Central High School at 2:00 and South High School at 5:00. Thursday, May 31st, SAE C graduation ceremony at 7:00 p.m. And superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to compliment our board members again who attended the foundations, the KSB foundations. Hopefully that'll encourage you and that you'll want to continue learning and attending KSB events. It's a great way to learn not only about leadership, but what happens around the state and how education works. So I hope you are encouraged by that. As far as the Salina Education Foundation, there's two numbers that I wrote down that I thought were pretty significant. For the LIF program, the Salina Education Foundation has put out over $282,000 so far. And for grants, over $700,000. That is impressive and significant. What a blessing for our district to have a Salina Education Foundation. This is my month to present to the Chamber of Commerce and it's always a pleasure to share all the great things going on in our district. After a while, they're just starting to give me the sign because it's just overwhelming to them, but it is really nice to be able to do that. I participated in a special event for Chamber of Commerce. They're doing a feasibility study. And a lot of it was having to do about workforce, that Salina needs to do some real serious efforts as far as increasing our workforce. And of course, USD 305 is a very integral part of that. So it's nice to be, I guess, to contribute and make a difference in that effort. It's an ongoing study and it's something that we're talking about in our district as well. We're very well positioned to do some amazing things for our community with our CTEs and our pathways. It's pretty impressive what we have in place to support our community. I have to say that last weekend was a very interesting weekend, of course, with the legislature. And I really want to compliment Mr. Eschner and his leadership team. They were very purposeful in their efforts in Topeka. They made a big impact. Our particular legislators, they have a good relationship with them, which is Jonathan, which is a real compliment. That's not that, it's not that way everywhere and that means that they really respect you and they appreciate you, what our NEA Salina does. I was in contact with our legislators the whole time. I had a date for both proms and after proms, we, my wife and I stayed attuned to what was going on with the legislature. We followed online and we followed the live, the live feed. And it was really, I have to really compliment our legislators. You know, I was in direct contact with Senator Hardy over the evening and Representative Dirks. And the fact that they, they respect each other and they work together was really significant for us. And it speaks well of us that we have these legislators that appreciate what we do and they want to be connected and they do listen. And that is really helpful. So I have to really compliment them. It was a very dramatic evening. I'm not sure if any of you stayed up till 1:00 or 1:30 to follow it, but it was, it's interesting to be a part of something that's so significant and that's going to make a huge impact on Kansas kids. So it was, it was really a very interesting event. Madam President, just a lot of other great things going on. The play last week at South, no, South, it was Central. Central.
Central.
Central, sorry. It's all running together now. Sorry, Nate. The thing I really appreciate, it was student-directed. And I was talking to the director and she was lamenting about what the hardest part of it was not just the directing, it was, she had to do the casting also. And that meant she had to take a lot into consideration. Some of those folks were her friends and it's kind of hard to tell your friends they didn't get that position. But it really tells a lot about our, our teachers, about how they teach leadership, because it's more than just a play, it has to do a lot with leadership. So it's been a really good couple of weeks here.
Okay, thank you. We do not have an executive session for personnel, but I understand negotiations is down. We do have an executive session for negotiations.
Yes, Madam President, we have negotiation. How much time do you think we'll need?
Five, 10 minutes.
Okay. How about if we start with 10, would that be okay? Okay, thank you. We'll go for 10.
I need a motion for executive session for negotiations. Anybody want to do that one?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 7 o'clock for 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize resolution of the negotiation issues. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 7:10 in the board conference room.
Second?
I second. Three of them.
Three of them, pick one.
Third, fourth.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 6-0. We are adjourned until 7:10. Thank you for being here this evening.